For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Craig Scott.
Oh.
Are you here today?
I'm here.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes, I'm here.
Brad Newbecker. Jenny David.
Here, let me hear from Brad. Did you hear from him? Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We usually have.
We have a motion, Commissioner Van. Any support?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item three, review of minutes. October 28, 2021, regular meeting minutes.
I read the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the October 28, 2021, regular meeting minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries. Review of minutes for November 4, 2021, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I reviewed those minutes. I wish to accept. I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Van with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the November 4, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, public comment on the agenda items. I'm only going to read this this once, and this applies for both both public. This applies to both areas of public comment. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment. On December 10, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 20-77 to adopt rules of procedure that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear in the meeting of agenda. On the meeting agenda, a second second public comment period appears later in the agenda, at which time public statements will be accepted on any matter or issue that is relevant or germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject matter. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound like a gavel when the audience applauds or directs to speaker. On behalf of board commissioners, we thank and advance your compliance with these rules. Is there any public comment in the room? And this is on agenda items. Any public comment on the phone? No, no public comment on the phone. Item five, correspondence. We received correspondence from Branch County related to the support for amendments to the Open Meetings Act, from Dickerson County related to support for American Rescue Plans, State Match, Jackson County related to opposition to COVID mandates, Marquette County related to support for American Rescue Plan State Match, Muskegon County related to support for Little Branch, Little River Band of Ottawa Indians Casino in Muskegon County. Item F, Oceana County related to support for amendments to the Open Meetings Act. Those have been received and filed. Item six, the action of consent calendar. I would like to go forward with doing these individually. Item seven, new business. We have item seven A, resolution to approve increased procurement card limit. This resolution is sponsored by the Custodian Maintenance Supervisor to authorize purchases of up to $2,500 per month on the Courthouse and Grounds Department procurement card. The current procurement card spending limit for all departments is $1,000 per month. The Custodian Maintenance Supervisor has determined that the $1,000 limit is insufficient to meet the monthly purchasing needs of the department. If approved, the increased limit would apply only to the Courthouse and Grounds Department procurement card. That's resolution seven A.
I would make a motion. Presented. So more.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Van to approve the resolution to approve increased procurement card limit discussion. Tim, you and I discussed this on Friday, and there was some discussion about this in the Committee of the Whole. We have already done this for what other departments?
Sheriff's Office, the Corrections Facility. I believe we did it for IT. Those three come to mind right away. There may have been a fourth one in there.
Any other discussion? No. Roll call out.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven C, resolution to authorize fund transfer. Oh, shoot. I skipped one, didn't I? Seventy, resolution to authorize letter of engagement for 2022 refunding bond. This resolution is sponsored by the County Treasurer and County Administrator. A review of the current interest rates and bonding capacity determined. It is a cost beneficial to refinance the 2012 capital improvement bond for construction of the Ogmao County Corrections Facility. A bond advisor is required to complete the refinancing process. Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC acted as a county's bond advisor for the original bonding process and has provided a quote to perform the refinancing service at a price of $29,500. That's resolution item seventy.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number seventy. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Discussion.
I have some questions. Um, so I looked that over, and we talked about if something changes between now and in February, that this whole process could be stopped.
But, yes.
But we still would be out the $29,500.
You wouldn't be out the full amount because we wouldn't have then, if we stopped the process, then we wouldn't have set the bids out to get the bond quotes back from anybody. There would be no evaluations that would occur of those bids, so it would not likely be the full amount. But we would obviously owe something for the work that was done up to that point.
Because according to your timeline, it was February.
Right.
My next question is, is during this process, during, once this is completed after February, does that interest rate ever get locked in?
It does. Once the bonds are sold, the whole process is this. We, the bond counselor here, we issue what really amounts to an RFP that describes what the project is, how long the bond is, just some other requirements for financing that are both federal and state law. And then we get quotes from those who want to buy the bond. We may get, you know, quotes that are exactly on the interest rate that we expect. We may get some that are lower. We may get some that are higher. But you literally, at that point, are able to select the one that offers you literally the best deal. So if somebody offers us two and a half percent, somebody else offers us 2.45, we'll likely go with the 2.45 unless there were some other fee or other costs that they've calculated into it. So literally, we get to choose the one that is the best suited, most advantageous for the county, and then that's when we lock in. Whatever that percentage rate is quoted, we lock in.
So if for some reason that percentage rate is higher than what we're paying now, we don't have to.
We checked all bids.
Okay. I just want to understand that. So there is no, no reason not to do this?
I can't think of one. Can't think of one at all. It really comes down to, from where I said, saving between $20,000 and $22,000 a year.
I just didn't like the note fixed. Okay, you answer my questions. Any other discussion?
We covered that in Committee of the Whole.
I just wanted to hear again.
I understand. I, I, because I asked that question in Committee of the Whole about if we back out, are we obligated for the entire amount? Tim explained that we weren't. So that's, I'm glad that you clarified it for everybody. Again, that's very good. I appreciate that.
Roll call out.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Please wait your turn. Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to authorize fund transfer. This resolution is sponsored by the Rascuny, Ogmao, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The fiscal year 2021 general fund budget included an allocation to DHHS of $5,000. DHHS requested reallocation of $2,981.86 in unspent funds to the Ogmao County Shut-Off Fund, which was recently renamed the Critical Needs Fund. The Critical Needs Fund provides temporary heat and utility assistance for eligible low-income families and individuals when heating or electric services has been or will be disconnected.
Make a motion to re-adapt.
This, this request from DHHS is consistent with past practice. No, you're fine. No, no, you're okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook.
Second.
With support from Commissioner Van. Is there any discussion? Did you, you, there hasn't been a meeting in between last week and this week, has there?
To be won this afternoon. We have one board member, there's a vacancy on the board right now, and another one of the board members is not going to be able to testify. We're not going to have a quorum for today, so we're not going to have a meeting until next month. Yesterday.
I just think we need to make sure we make a little note of this for next year to see if there's any other funds next year. But, any other discussion? Roll call out.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Oh.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to authorize fund transfer. This resolution, oh geez, I just said that. Resolution to, resolution to establish administrative secretary compensation, item seventy. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator. On October 28, 2021, the Ogmao County Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 21-141 to prove a, to approve a job description for the position of administrative secretary. Approval of this resolution would establish an hourly pay schedule for the position for fiscal year 2022 and add the administrative secretary to the fiscal year 2022 position allocation list as a full-time position at 35 hours per week. Funds for this position would be transferred from the general fund, general appropriation contingency line item. That was a multiple.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion on this? I will just say that I am in favor of this position, and I did stop in and discuss this with Tim. However, again, my, my stance on it is just to start the position with, as a part-time position and see what the workload is and see how we are financially. So again, I do support this position, but that is that is what I recommended. So, any other discussion on it? Roll call out.
Oh, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No. Item seven E, resolution to support Michigan Prosperity Roadmap Plan. This resolution is sponsored by the County Administrator. The Coalition for a Strong and Prosperous Michigan set out to thoughtfully answer how to strategically invest the billions of dollars for the American Rescue Plan, dedicated to the state to support individuals, education, small business, infrastructure, and government. Michigan counties were represented by the Coalition by the Michigan Association of Counties. Together, they developed a comprehensive roadmap to amplify use of AR, art funds, as documented in the Michigan Prosperity Roadmap Plan. The proposal broadly recommends allocations of the state's $6 billion in art resources across five key areas: infrastructure, fiscal health, thriving community, strong economic, strong economy, and public health and safety. Approval of this resolution would formally state Ogmao County support for the roadmap plan.
Move the week, adopt this resolution. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook. Is there any any further discussion on this? See, they're wording on this because we discussed this in the Committee of the Whole. Because this talks about the American Rescue Plan. I guess this is, when we talked about this in the Committee of the Whole, this is state funds, not the federal funds.
It's federal funds that were awarded to the state goal, but it's under the same program that the county has. Only there was a state silo, if you will, of funding that came from Washington, and this addresses some priorities, guidance for the state. Resolution. Words. Without making any law.
Any further discussion? And this does not commit us to anything.
No.
Hey, I just, again, wanted that out there. I think I asked. A roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item seven F, resolution to confirm district court appointments. This resolution is sponsored by the district court to confirm appointments. Kelsey P. Abram and Leanne M. Ross as magistrates of the 82nd District Court. Can you explain this, Tim?
Yeah, this is action that would normally be accomplished through our power forms. If we would just simply have seen it, then the personnel would be moved to those positions, and that would be it. The judge at the district court has asked that the board actually formally approve these. I suspect it has something to do with his interpretation of court rules and how they interact with the funding unit. This really doesn't do anything different than what the power form would have done, other than cause us to wait a couple of weeks to get it in front of you and have you approve it. And it does, you know, it's a higher level of formality, I guess, for lack of another word, but just, again, accomplishes what that power form would have done.
Questions? Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
I'm just sitting there wondering what happened if we failed this. I mean, not, not that that, I'm not predicting anything. I'm just curious why they did that. Normally, it's historically just been, the judge says he's moving somebody.
I thought he did that. Like, I remember Leanne, I remember it bringing, being brought to us with Leanne already, already was changed to a magistrate.
She was a while ago.
So.
He just wanted it.
Is he adding a magistrate? That's my question.
No.
So.
Wow.
How many magistrates are there?
There.
You know? I don't know.
Historically, it was one. I don't know.
Four.
There's four?
Yeah, yeah.
She just said four.
Or four.
Lori Allison, Leanne, Kelsey.
I would have to.
Kelsey's replacing Lori when she retires.
So. Oh, yeah, there's some overlap. That's also part of what the judge wanted to do is.
So there would be three. Lori Allison, Kelsey, and what was it when you said?
Leanne.
And I remember we already passed one for Leanne, so is this like a, something different? That's a couple years ago. I'm a little confused.
Uh, I'm trying to remember when it was.
It was right when I start, like shortly, within six months of the term. And my question to Tim was this morning when I came in, is, is we, we developed a policy as far as bringing this stuff to the board. I mean, I didn't see this until last night. Our policy was bringing it to a Committee of the Whole, putting it on.
Well, and again, in this case, I think that the counter to that is, we would normally handle this administratively. You wouldn't have to see it at all. We've already got authorized us to make these movements within the position allocation list. This doesn't violate anything there. I think what the judge is doing, though, is just establishing that this was a fact brought to the funding unit. The funding unit was okay with it, so it's a more formal way of doing what we would normally have done with the power form. I'm good with.
Pardon me?
I'm good with it. I've called for.
We haven't even.
We haven't even.
We haven't got that for you.
I'll make a motion to, to adopt the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Scott from Commissioner Van. And again, I don't understand these, these jobs by any means. I guess why, he, I, he's retiring soon, so why, before he retires, before a new person comes in, I guess, why the timing? Why now?
I have absolutely no answer for that. This is the danger of asking me to sponsor your resolution. I have no clue.
I'm saying, I disagree. I'm just asking the question of why, right before you retire? Is this a promotion?
Well, there is, remember, there is one retirement going on with one of the magistrates.
Okay.
And this may have been the trigger in the mind of the judges, that we're filling one of the positions while the incumbent that's going to retire is still there. So we're going to have literally a dual position going on. But given that this is going to grant about six weeks of overlap with holidays in there, too, for training, I think it's a pretty wise move. But that may be what the thinking is, but I'm only guessing. I don't know that for sure.
When's Judge's last day?
December 15th, 16th. In the courthouse. So he's not technically done until the end of the year, and then he's going to stay on and help until they appoint somebody. And but he's technically his last day here is, it's the 15th or 16th. And I'm thinking that he was thinking he didn't already have one for Leanne.
I, there was. I remember. There were some questions that were asked as well. So this isn't another position. She's already in that current position. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're replacing somebody that's retiring.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call out.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven G, claims. Uh, it looks like claims of a total of $137,751.39. Is that correct?
I, I reviewed the claims. I'll make a motion with the claims. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to agree to pay claims in that amount of $137,751.39. Discussion. Can you guys scroll over them briefly?
Yeah, they were, nothing jumped out as huge or anything like that. It was pretty normal stuff. There was quite a few empty files. We had an appropriation to Sable Valley. It was $28,000. That's a pass-through kind of appropriation. I mean, there really, nothing really jumped off the page. I was pretty, pretty surprised. Doing it, so. Once again, you know, individual care, individual council is expensive and, and, you know, the inmate health service is expensive, you know, but those are regular, they're regular expenses. And so maybe next round of claims are going to be a lot more, but right now, not too bad.
What's, what's, as I'm looking at it, what's grand traverse band of Ottawa uniforms? How much is that? 500 bucks? What's that one?
It's for the best for the big wire.
Oh.
He transferred from that group that agreed to sell it at that price.
Oh. So we found a new, a new officer? Oh, good. Okay. I thought, I thought I saw some training in here as well. Where did that go? I'm just looking. I'm sorry.
Be pleased to report there's no invoices for snowplow.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah.
Let's review the claims with you. Commissioner Serbrook, did you?
No.
Oh, Brandon?
I think Brad might have got here.
I wanted to make sure he didn't. It's very odd. He didn't reach out at all, saying he wasn't going to be here. You didn't hear from him?
No.
He was here yesterday afternoon and reviewed them.
I had contacted him by text that Mark wasn't going to come by, and he said he would.
Does he have any questions? Anything?
He talked to Tracy. I'm not sure if he did or not. I didn't have any communication with him. I just saw him and they're talking to Tracy.
Any other questions? I thought I saw something in here with training. I was going to ask you guys if there was somebody, do you guys have somebody new in training right now? I looked at this last night. I'm sorry.
We may be referring to the FTO train that was sent up.
Yeah.
Maybe that was it.
Yeah, that's probably it.
So is that another new officer?
That would be, he's going to be our other training officer.
Oh, okay. I don't see it now, but.
795.
I seen it somewhere, but I was just wondering. I thought maybe it was somebody new that we were training and got excited briefly.
DeWolfen, DeWolfen Associates. If you're looking at us. At the age nine out of 13. Right, right, right above the grand traverse bandage.
I see it. DeWolfen Associates, yep. Okay. Oh, there is a name there.
Because I'd get.
Where do they go for that?
If Deputy leaves for whatever reason, do we just re-sign his vest to somebody else?
We have his other vests that he handed down when he retired.
That's what I mean, retirement, saying, would you, would you just take his vest and give it to somebody else then?
Bits.
Oh, of course.
Bits, yeah. Bits probably were last.
So is this a promotion with this training for Deputy Wood? Is this a step up?
He's taking on more responsibility for the vastness of the trade. Higher. How field training officer. Responsible for system.
So it is a promotion. I, I mean, yeah.
It's, there's a premium paid for the time that he operates as a, as a training officer. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a, not a raise. It's a premium paid during that time. That's how the contract goes.
Well, I'm assuming he's got quite a bit of experience. This is his.
Well, as compared to the rest of them, yeah, he probably does. They're looking at a pretty low seniority group, right? Other, other than your, other than your, other than your commands, command, what's the you got one at, you got one at 20 years, Deputy at 20 years, and you got?
Probably 21 years, and then we got 15.
I, I assume you'll give this update in here, because I did have some individuals last me, asked me last night, updates at the village there as far as how the people in the academy are doing. I'm assuming you're going to give us an update, so we'll cross that bridge in. Um, any, any further discussion with claims? Uh, roll call out.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item nine, administrator, or excuse me, item eight, unfinished business. I don't believe there is any crack. Item nine, administrative, administrators' report.
Okay. One last chance to stop me, because once this action takes place, there's no going back. Made arrangements to have that small brown building demolition and all the way. On Friday, we will actually do the physical move of the files that are in their, their new home over at the old jail. The utility disconnect will happen. I've asked Chris to make sure that that's done. He can do that at any point. Our quote for the demolition and disposal is $3,000, and showroom model detailing has offered to do all the seating. So what's, what Kelly wants is all the grass to match over there instead of having to patchwork, and offered to have that seated for us, probably in the spring. I think it's too late right now to do it. But seriously, once this button is pushed, that's it for the building. We can't bring it back. So just want to make sure we're all still on the same page with that.
I'd say, good riddance.
If I'm doing, if I'm doing all the physical work to move it, it's happening.
Yeah, and Brett has asked for assignment of a sledgehammer to take the first shot. Still, that might be all it takes.
Who's doing it?
I wish I could remember the name. I forgot.
Really, I would like a sledgehammer to take the first shot.
Well, just because I didn't know. I mean, we talked about this. Well, this moved fairly quickly. It just come about from last week to this week.
We've been talking about this for about a month, and I'm a little embarrassed to say that, because it should have only been about two weeks, but I talked to Karen and Brett on Friday, and we solidified our date. I talked to Chris yesterday as far as getting the, he says a trailer. I still think a U-Haul that's covered would be better, but just to get everything out of there in one swoop. And then, you know, having that authorize the demolition quote yet, pending this meeting, in case anybody wanted to say stop, not hearing that. So we'll, we'll move forward. But, yeah, it's been, I really, it wasn't the last meeting, but the meeting before, when we talked about doing this.
I saw the final came up last meeting, but I could be wrong. I thought it just, anyways, you don't know who's, who's doing the demolition?
I do. I just don't have it in front of me.
You don't know?
I don't. I don't.
I mean, that's great. No, it doesn't matter. I just, they deserve recognition for $3,000.
Hold on, I think I can.
Below, it's below. This is all below the bidding level, right?
I understand, but again, I feel like they deserve. I understand, but again, I, I feel like they deserve. It'll be done Friday, so I won't see.
We're not gonna demo on.
Well, do you have Friday off?
I do, do you want help?
I just asked all paving.
Oh.
Give us the quote.
Wow. Do you need help moving stuff, like for real?
It's, is it just the, is Chris helping us? Is it just the three of us and Chris? Are you helping us?
I unfortunately, uh, scheduled something.
So it's Karen, myself and Chris.
What time are you starting?
If you need additional help, I think we can.
Chairperson David just volunteered.
Hold that sledgehammer, because she's gonna go for it.
Me? No, I don't have, I don't have any anger. What time are you?
Uh, well, probably, I'd imagine we'll. I'm gonna be here.
I'm, I'm morning.
Eight o'clock, eight thirty, eight thirty.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
Just one other thing, just, um, keep the board in the loop, we do have mediation scheduled tomorrow with our corrections unit that will begin at ten o'clock. And the balance of my day today will be spent preparing for that, the mediator has asked for a narrative from each team. Uh, to bring her rate up to speed, so hopefully this will be a speedy process.
Or something else, something I asked you about.
Sure, the answer was yes.
I'll take a maybe. I don't remember what it was, anyways, okay, that's it.
That's it.
Item ten elected officials and department head reports, clerk.
I have one, um, last Tuesday. I did my first election, uh, got our township passed, um. Village for operating. That passed, so they can stay open, we did the canvas two days later, that was successful. We are going to be having another jury trial scheduled for the eighteenth. Uh. Came in this weekend and my girls painted our office. So we're brushing things up after many years of. Old.
You guys painted it yourselves?
Yes. Um. Trying to save some money.
Thank you.
And I believe that's it.
Sheriff, Sheriff.
Just got a couple things. And Halloween and Devil's Night, we had extra patrol out there, we had two cars working till three AM in the morning. Uh, just to kind of mix it up a little bit. We're all, uh, training for our, uh, two officers that we recently hired is doing really well. Um, shop with a cop, uh, we got it scheduled for December fifteenth. Uh, the detective lieutenant, they also are, are helping training, so detectives in uniform as of yesterday, so. We're out there as a team trying to get this thing rolling, our night shift rolling. Uh, night patrol, uh, we're scheduled, uh, for our night patrol November twenty eighth. Get it up and rolling. Um. School, uh, two that's in school for the academy, that I believe they're in week thirteen. What I understand, so, and they're on the down side, so, should be a lot easier. And that's all I have.
How's your overtime running right now? How's your overtime running?
I think we're, we're okay, we're in budget. Watching it.
It was the Halloween.
Halloween, yeah.
Devil's Night was at all overtime?
It was overtime.
It's not just a shifting?
Yeah, we just wanna mix it up and, uh, the element of surprise, that's what we're about.
Got the stealth look, you might as well.
Pardon me?
Have the stealth look, you might as well, be stealthy.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's gonna go well.
When did the two graduate from the academy? When is it?
I think it's December fifteenth, eighteenth, somewhere in there. And we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna right on training.
Comes, because some constituents are asking, you said night patrol starts the twenty eighth, how, how many, how many nights?
We're gonna, we're gonna slip two up right now and get it started.
Two nights a week?
No, it'll be a, it'll be one rotation, so it'll be two guys.
Okay.
And then soon as we get the elements trained, we're gonna slip the other two up.
So is that three, they do twelve hours, so is that three nights a week?
Uh, it's gonna be every other, it's gonna be two days on, two days off, so you got Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday, then for Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then it switches.
Just because residents are asking, I wanna make sure I'm giving the right information, so that's.
That's what we work, is the twelve hour shifts, it works good for us.
So that's, you're gonna have three nights covered one week and four nights, if I understood that, three nights, starting on eleven twenty eight.
Run me, run me that one more time, Monday?
Uh, you're gonna have two on, two off, so you got Monday, Tuesday, off Wednesday, Thursday. To work Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Then you're off Monday and Tuesday. Working Wednesday, Thursday, so it switches every week.
Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, Saturday, Sunday again.
And then when we get the other two trained, we're gonna fill that twenty four seven.
But that, they get out of the academy on the fifteenth, there's, I'm assuming, what, six weeks of training, I, I don't.
Yeah.
Give or take.
All depends on how well they.
So then that puts us for full time twelve fifteen, so that would. Hopefully, if all goes well, you're probably looking at full time February-ish? Is that fair?
Should, that's fair. Providing nothing, nothing goes wrong, of course, we're doing everything possible to get it out there, so.
So. There's three in a car to start with then?
No.
You got training officer and, and.
Well, the two that we're putting up at night is already been, they're already been working days, we're gonna move our day shift up, so the.
Oh, they're already training.
Come in on the day shift, do the training, and then once they're trained, then we're gonna pull these two up, after we get it, if we get it filled, we're gonna pull the two. Down and then put these up. So the two that's going up, it's got seniority over the four that were just hired.
Week one, November twenty eighth. The two that go out are already trained.
Yes.
But no training officer with them.
No, no, they're trained officers.
Alright.
They'll be hitting the road.
Command will be on call then, for the, the command is on call then, during, during the time there.
What's that mean?
Well, there's. Command person, no command physician working the night hours, they're just on call.
Yep. So if something, if something goes really bad. They'll call the command officers, then we make a decision what we need to do, so that's why they got their phones and. We're, and we're on call twenty four seven.
I just wanna make sure I got that right, because I did, I've been asked that twice already.
That's what we're shooting for, you know, I can't guarantee anything, and I don't wanna put anything in stone, but as soon as we can get it out there, we're gonna get.
But you'll keep us updated in case, because again, we don't wanna give information out that's not true. The next thing is, is Tim had sent out an email related to the tajos, can you give an explanation related to, because you had told us they weren't gonna be on the road until night shift started?
Okay, well, that's part of the training.
Okay.
Tajos are gonna be a night patrol car.
Okay.
The ones that are being trained right now is the night officers, they need to do, they need to know how to operate that car, they need to know how to operate that computer. They need to know the functions of that vehicle. And they, we also wanna get it out there, so we know that everything's working. Lights are working and we're not having issues with the transmitter, you know, we just wanna make sure that when we hit the road, we're gonna hit hard. We ain't got no glitches, so. The reason why that one Tahoe is up and running is because that guy that's in there being trained is gonna be our night guy, he needs to let be. And you know the vehicle in the daytime a lot better than. That's why.
It was a question in an email that he sent out. So I, I guess I'm, and I'm not trying to argue by any means, I guess I'm just confused, because Commissioner Scott just asked if the, the officers that are started on eleven twenty eight are. Are trained, train, are, are trained or trainees.
Right, he, he said that, that they've been trained already during the daytime, they've been trained. That's what I'm gathering.
These are experienced officers that's gonna go up and fill that night shift that November twenty eighth, they're experienced officers, so we don't.
Yeah, I mean.
Do any kind of training.
Yeah. What's their seniority? As far as when you say they're training, they're experienced officers.
Well, one has got twenty six years, twenty seven years, the other one's probably got two.
Good. I, I know it sounds like we're trying to argue with you, and it sounds like we're, you know, some people might think we're micromanaging, or, or just asking questions. We get questioned that all the time, that, people ask us questions all the time. We make reports here every meeting, you hear us, make reports that we talk with groups and townships and everything else. I mean, we went over last, while you weren't here, but the undersheriff was here when the IT guy went over the. Hits on YouTube, how many people are watching our, our videos, they're watching them.
Yeah.
Look at our screen right today, I mean, we got twenty people on the call right now, or close to it, it's. People just wanna know, and. If, if you tell us one thing and it, it's gonna deviate, fine, it's training, I get it, I get it.
I go to these township meetings myself.
I know, you and I were at Horton last night.
Right, so I, I'm, I'm gonna, people tend to be asked more questions when you're. For some reason, because people don't always have the confidence to ask questions in front of you, they seem to ask. Different, let me rephrase that, they seem to ask different questions when you are not there. So I'm encouraging you to be there a hundred percent, so I just wanna make sure that I'm giving the right information on, on all, on, on all, and, and I did have also.
Just gotta remember that this, this, this changes, changes on a dime, and we have to flow with it.
And that's fair, a hundred percent.
To, to give, to give it, uh, an accurate date on things, you know, I'm not gonna lock myself into that. I'm gonna do the very best that I can do, I was put in a position to do, do my job, do the very best I'm gonna do.
If you can just provide us with updates, that way then we can pass those updates on, updates and explanations, because again, those tajos, you, you did say that those would not be up until one until.
Part of training.
Until night shift was moving, so. As far as when a constituent asks me, I wanna be able to give them that, the appropriate explanation.
And to refer them to me.
I, well, I think it comes down to the fact, Jenny, that, that those tajos are new to the bad agency. Nobody's been in a Tahoe.
No.
It shifts different. And they're, and it's, so the entire setup of those things is totally different from the car.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, but we're looking at, at a timeframe from eleven twenty eight, they've been on the road now, so I've seen a few of them periodically, or one of them, I don't. I don't even know how many's there, I don't know how many's set up, I don't know anything, so again, I don't disagree, but that. That's questions that I'm being asked, and I wanna be able to provide an explanation.
And I'm trying to help you out, be able to explain that, because those are new vehicles to that agency, nobody has been in those vehicles. You need to take it, you need to know right where things are, so when, you know what hits the fan. You're not, you're, you're, you're doing muscle memory, it's bang, okay, this is where the sirens is, radio on my computer, so you can do it just. Without thinking about it.
So I just wish, just going forward, someone like me who knows nothing about this, is when that question was asked a month or two ago, whenever that was. That that was explained at that point in time, not, no, they won't be out on the road until night shift starts.
I'm just.
Then we wouldn't be having this discussion.
If, you know, if you have, if you have somebody ask you a question, not real concerned, or not, you don't know how to answer it, just refer them to me.
What, what?
Office and I will.
What I typically tell them is I reach out or I ask the questions and then I will get back to them, so again, I'm not gonna, if somebody's uncomfortable asking a question. I'm not gonna intimidate them.
My door's always open, and, and.
That's fair.
It's an open meeting, my door's always open, anybody that wants to, you know.
That's fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same time, we're just saying, it's a quick call or email or text to Tim, he can disseminate it to all of us. You know, he's our age, just, just let him know, hey, we're taking the towels.
Well.
To train.
We, we operate on a fly over there, so there's a lot, there's a lot of mechanics that goes on over there that, that, that we have to do.
Alright.
Thank you.
Why?
Any other elected officials, Denise, I see, I'm sorry.
One more question, Brian, Sheriff. Is any of the new hires, you got anything you need to disclose about any of the new hires or anything like that? We talked about disclosure about relationships or anything like that. In the past.
Well, disclosure, is that what you're talking about? What, what, what even?
I don't, I don't know.
I, I, you know, I don't know, I. Anybody related to you that's getting hired?
Okay, I wouldn't do that.
Well, I. You told me you weren't gonna take your car out either, but, you know, I'm just saying that, you know.
You have something there, you wanna.
No, I don't have anything, I'm just saying, I don't know anything about who we tire, and I just like that, I would ask any department at this.
That's fair.
You know, because of the history that we've gone through here, I mean, I, you know, I think it's, I think it's good. That it's something, if, if there is a relationship, we need to know that ahead of time, so we don't get questioned.
Correct.
I get tired of getting questioned about. What happens in the county building. You know, and how did people move up the ladder and everything else, the last thing I wanna know is, I come from Ogmore County, the good old boy place, you know? You know, I mean, I, I think that's a fair question, I don't have any particular reason to ask, just generally speaking.
I just wanted to give you the opportunity, in case there was something that you wanted to.
The answer to that is no.
Okay, good, good, good.
Denise, do you have anything?
No, I do not have anything.
Okay, uh, Jeff, I see you're on the call.
Just a reminder, we have our veterans day ceremony Thursday, eleven o'clock at the VFW Hall at M thirty and Lehman across from Wagon Wheel.
Anything else, Jeff?
Oh, that's it.
Any other elected officials or department heads on the call? Did you wanna come back up?
I just wanna. Invite each and every one of yous to come over and take a look at the hot tub. Come on over and take a look at them, and you'll see the mechanics of the interior compared to our cars, and that's, that was a form of training, so.
Is there two, are they both here and, and equipped now?
One in the parking lot, once, one a trainee is in it right now today driving.
So only once, once?
One, one over there right now. The other one's out.
Okay.
I invite yous over there to take a look at it.
So both here, both fully equipped?
Yeah, yeah.
I seen the one sitting over there today this morning, it looks pretty, sitting there clean and nice.
We just, we just wanna make sure everything works, all the lights work, so we don't wanna stick that on nights. And then find out that our overheads aren't working or something, and then we're, then we got a, then we got a problem, so.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Members from the floor, are there any? Questions for adoption? Committee reports, Commissioner Scott.
Okay, well, since the last meeting, uh, I did attend the NEMSCA meeting, it was here in West Branch. And, uh, they went over the head start programs and, and their annual report. It was very interesting, uh, I also sat on the compliance committee. Which I'm not sure absolutely the full scope of that, but, uh. I sat in on that. Um, uh, just a note. You know, or I've been with the, uh, resolution for the old, to change the Open Meetings Act. To keep Zoom voting, and they are very much, uh, i- i- wanting to do that also. Uh, because of the miles traveled, eleven counties are involved in this, and, you know, most of the meetings are in Alpena and. And, um, and with weather and everything else, they're very open to the, uh, to have in Zoom voting. Which will go away in another month and a half, so. Anyway, yeah, and then, uh, just two of my townships, Horton and Edwards, was last night, uh. So, uh, and there was nothing. Revolutionary there, but, uh, that was the only thing I thought through since I reported last.
Commissioner Serbrook?
I attended, uh, West Branch City Council meeting last Monday. Very, uh, lively discussion about the drone ordinance, the city has enacted the drone ordinance, and it was, um. They had some audience participation in regards to it, as well as the, uh, city attorney. Involved in it, so they did pass the ordinance, but, uh. involved in it, so they did pass the ordinance, but it was an interesting discussion in regards to it. Um, met with Commission on Aging. There are, we've had, we have two people that are resigning from the Commission on Aging Board effective the end of the year, so there are gonna be two open positions on Commission on Aging. So if you know of anybody that might be interested, I'm a son of, lawyer of interest to Carol Gilman.
Are they gonna post that?
Yes, they are. And we also discussed, and Tim, if you can put this on the ARPA funds list, and I kinda talked about it before, as the generator for that building. They're getting a quote from Coleman. They don't have it yet. I told Carol as soon as she got the quote, let me know with the, I guess, and it's gonna be probably in the fifty-five, sixty thousand dollar range.
Have, have they reached out to Mike?
And I, I su, I suggested that she do that as well, sees maybe we can, if there's a match, if there's possibly a matching grant.
There has to be a grant, cuz that's an emergency shelter.
Doesn't have to be, but the show would be next to the wall.
I mean, I would say, that's the emergency shelter, correct?
It's designated shelter, yes.
So I really think there should be something there.
And as well as, and I don't know if it's unboosted or not, generator in this building. So, that's it.
Um, that ordinance, is that new, is that?
Brand new.
So what was the, the debate, the debate?
There is, and, and I didn't, I did not read the ordinance, I'll be quite honest. Mister Mayor, I know you weren't there, maybe you can avoid and chair the boat with the, it. So now we take off and, and it's restricting, like in the school area, from people hovering.
Privacy issue.
Privacy over a fence or something, not just a flyover, but for, actually to.
Hovering, type of thing?
Yeah, hover and.
There were some issues in the city with a couple that were flying. They had some aircraft system that were hovering over houses. I had one hovering over mine several months ago, so. And it was already a problem up to that, so the city enacted the ordinance that dictates, like, we've been debating, talking to the accident, councilmen, the accidents, was just that it mirrors a lot of the FAA regulations currently, so a lot of it is the same type of thing the FAA does, but the FAA is not gonna take one mile square town. You know, they're not gonna come up very often.
Right, it was an enforcement issue, again, yeah, like, like Mayor said, slash under sheriff. FAA does regulate drones, but are they gonna, you know, if there's a complaint, are they gonna come to Little West Branch, Michigan, when West Branch can enact its own ordinance that basically, again, like Mayor said, there's FAA regulations, so they can enforce them all.
So is there a timeframe on them, on drones? Is that part of the ordinance?
Time frame.
Like a morning, or, is there hours to operate?
Well, I don't think so.
No, it wasn't hours to operate, it was altitude, different locations, and restrictions. Hovering or privacy issues in your ass time.
So if someone has a complaint, who do they reach out to?
The police department.
Okay, and then then.
University Hall, obviously, one, one generator. Skill, you know, to violate the city. Or the violation.
Commissioner Matt?
Met with the Ogden County Medical Advisory Board, uh, two things that stood out. Uh, the possibility of a helicopter being stationed in the, at the West Branch Hospital, which would be a major, major loss area. And then also, uh, training's gonna start, something like in January, through the hospital and bump it up to a level three trauma center. Um, I believe they're at a four right now. Um, bump it to a three, which would hold a lot more people in the hospital than shipping them out, so, uh, the board's kinda getting their stuff together, and I've only been there a very short time, but I'm very impressed with that board.
In Michigan?
Yeah.
There's a lot to that.
Yeah, there's like twenty, there's like twenty on the board. That's a lot of, a lot of good insight there. That's one meeting I've done.
Kind of busy week. Um, attended Fair Board meeting last Thursday. Um, I let them know, did you ever happen to touch base with her? Did you try again?
Tell her phone number. Oh, I haven't called her yet.
Would you please?
Yes.
Um, I let them know that we do have them on the list for ARPA funds. They were pretty excited about that. Um, there, did some cleanup over the weekend. Uh, those, those volunteers out there put a lot of time in and a lot of effort in. Um, and you don't necessarily know that until you go to those meetings. Um, went to a Michigan Works meeting as well last Friday. Uh, individuals are gonna have to start reporting in November, actually, in person, and I cannot recall the exact date. Um, that's gonna be big, very big, uh, for people with unemployment to have to actually physically report to Michigan Works. Um, the director gave a pretty thorough report and said you're gonna see the unemployment rates, uh, go up pretty significantly here when this does come into effect. Um, it'll be an actual, much accurate, uh, count. Um, EDC, we have that Economic Outlook Breakfast is tomorrow morning at seven thirty. Um, it's gonna be at Michigan Works. It's gonna be virtual or in person. Um, I told you the three speakers, um, and that is tomorrow morning at seven thirty. Um, as far as my townships, did you have a question?
Virtual breakfast.
Oh, that was.
You cook at home and get on the TV?
They are gonna have coffee, donuts tomorrow. Um, that was, that was part of the issue with the COVID rates and, and things going on, and they originally wanted it at Four Words, and that got shut down, and then at the area out there at Gray Road and couldn't find anybody to cater it, so it's been kind of a mess, but anyways, there are three very, very intelligent, educated, uh, good speakers that will, uh, be there. Um, so again, if you're not able to attend in person, I recommend you tuning in. Um, I attended Logan Township, uh, last Wednesday. The trash, I think, got approved. It's been quite an ordeal. Um, it's kind of an opting in or opt, or not opting in, um. Uh, it's been about a three-year process. Now their issue is, is hopefully they get enough residents in this township to, uh, uh, sign up for this price, um, to keep that same price of sixteen or eighteen dollars. I think it's sixteen a month. Um, what else with that? Nothing, nothing with roads this month. Uh, Richland Township, um, campground, they're again trying to go to more electric spots, they're waiting for, uh, uh, primary electric, um, kinda waiting on them for that. Um, the marijuana facility out there, um, some of the board members had the opportunity to go out there and, and tour it. Um, they got a little gift bag that they showed us. It's like two hundred and fifty dollars worth of, uh, little oils and stuff. Anyways, um, right now that.
Get two bags?
I didn't get any, I didn't go. Um, I had the opportunity to go and, and I opted out, but, uh, anyways, uh, the facility currently has sixty employees out there. Um.
Sixty?
Sixty.
Six, zero.
Six, zero.
Oh.
Yes. Um, they're building another building, it sounds like, I don't know exactly when, but basically to get the workers out of the environment, like a heated type of building, it sounds like. Um, by next summer, I think they're anticipating two hundred workers. Yes, eighteen dollars an hour. Um, and, uh, they are purchasing, they had to change their ordinance because this, this place out there is purchasing two, uh, machines. I've seen a picture of them, they wa, something about washing, I, I don't know, but, uh, twenty-three million dollars a piece. I'm not kidding you, to wash these, and, and they had to, they had to kinda tweak their ordinance to allow these machines in there, so, I don't know. Anyways, that was the primary discussion there. Um, I went to the Village last night. Uh, ordinance, um, they have one gentleman they're really struggling with, that sounds like they're gonna take it to the next step. They've been in contact with Ryan Peter quite a bit. Um, brought up their septic, uh, plant. Um, and I told them about these monies, um, and that I did bring them up in the last, uh, committee of the whole to keep them on the list, because that, uh, that plan out there, and again, it's these meetings that are educating me, um, on costs, and there's so many upgrades out there that, uh, need to be done, and there's always something broke down. Um, so I, I did pass on that we will keep them, and that's the, the Village of Prescott, keep them on the, uh, list for their septic and receiving.
Again, just in relation to one of the resolutions you passed today with the state funding, that's part of what that resolution says, is that we would like the state to actually help fund some of these.
Yeah, that's what I let them know.
Type projects as well, so, yeah, good.
I let them know that we talked about that in committee of the whole, and it was brought up, just like the lead pipes, um, and it was all part of it, so they were excited to hear that hopefully in the future they can get some help, because it's, 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 and it's a very busy plant, um, very busy to all the surrounding, um. But I think that's it for me. Yeah, I think Mills is tonight, so. Anything else? Did I miss anybody?
Um, just one thing I'd like to tell the sheriff, I, I liked seeing your article in the newspaper. Very good PR.
Oh, yeah, from the desk. Yeah, it was great.
Hope to see more of them. That's it.
Item fifteen?
Fifteen? You wanna make more? Better do item.
I would.
What?
Better do item fourteen.
Did I miss? Oh, my gosh!
Oh, geez. Same. That's same.
Sorry. Item fourteen, general public comments. Uh, this is for any, any items, um, not agenda related, so again, please keep your comments to three minutes. Um, is there any public comment in the room? I apologize for that. Any public comment on the phone?
Uh, yes, I have a public comment.
Your name, sir?
My name is Kurt Schyberger, West Branch, Michigan.
Okay, go ahead.
And my question is in reference to the, uh, school resource officer. Uh, as a member of the West Branch Rose City School Board, I have questioned our superintendent, uh, about what grant is, um, pays for our school resource officer. Through my own research, I, uh, figured out that it's called the COPS twenty-twenty grant. Uh, if I am incorrect, I, uh, could be, um, you know, please inform me, but if that is the current grant, um, there are some issues that I think need to be answered, because we do have a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's department, and I just have some questions, and I'm not looking for answers right now. I realize as a board, you cannot come up with these, but just something to think about. Um, my understanding is that s, school resource officers are supposed to be new hires. Um, and these new hires have to have a minimum of a twelve-month employment. Um, is a new hire position. I wonder if that was looked at. Um, I also see that there's mandatory training uh, for school resource officers, uh, that are required to take. I can find no evidence that our current school resource officer has received this training. Um, I'm hoping that could be, uh, fixed. I also see that yearly background checks are supposed to be done for school resource officers, but not done by their employing agency. Um, again, I can't find evidence of that occurring, um, and would like to see, um, some kind of response to that, not at this time. I, I'm willing to let you do some research, and then finally, um, there is an assessment tool that's supposed to be done yearly, that a committee from the school and the sheriff's department are supposed to look at to in continue the employment of that officer, and I can see no evidence of any of that occurring in at least the last five years I've been on the school board. So I was just wondering if the commissioners could investigate that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot of information there. Would, I would ask.
I think it was, is it recording still?
It, it is. Mister Schuber, have you, you reached out to the sheriff to get your questions?
I have not, because, um, even though he says he has an open door policy, you know, there are some of us that have may not feel comfortable with an open door policy if the open door is the sheriff's department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Commissioner Scott?
I thought maybe you should ask for this in writing. Uh, that's all over load of information.
I'm sorry, is it a question for me?
I'm asking the chairman to, if, if she would instruct you to submit something in writing to us, and then we'll, we'd have to compare it to our agreement with the school.
Okay, um, it, there is a memorandum of understanding, I can, um, I'm sure the sheriff's department has a copy of that, but, um, I, I can forward my copy. Most of my information came from public sources. I just looked up COPS grants on how they pay for school resource officers. It's pretty much all out there, so, um, I can forward those sites to you if you would like, but, um, I think my four questions were pretty clear.
We'll put this on the, I'm sorry, Mister Schuber, we'll put this on the committee of the whole, that way our, our administrator also can look into your questions and, and hopefully come up with, uh, some explanation, cuz we definitely don't want any trouble in the future.
Yeah, and that's, that is my concern, you know, this is a federal grant, and if we are not following the rules of federal grants, all of us knows what ha, all of us know what can happen. Clawbacks are not fun.
Thank you. We'll put it on the committee of the whole next week.
Thank you.
Reach out to the board, the board educations, make sure they're involved in this.
Let Tim do a little bit of research, and we'll go from there, and, and communicate with the sheriff's office. Any other public comment on the phone? Any other public comment? Make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Support. May adjourn at, uh, ten oh six. Allen Baver, say it.
Hi.
Right.
Yes.
Post. Motion carries. I should've gave an update on that.
Second, I agree.